Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's Tuesday, January the 30th. Welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting at 6:30 PM. I'm calling the meeting to order. And we're going to start with a moment of silent reflection. But before we do so, I just want to share a few comments. Tomorrow marks the start of Black History Month in Canada. During Black History Month, people in Canada celebrate the many achievements and contributions of Black Canadians in their communities who throughout history have done much to make Canada a culturally diverse, compassionate, and prosperous country. In Port Hope, we will mark the start of Black History Month with a Pan-African Flag-Raising Ceremony on February 1st, 2024, at 11:00 AM at Town Hall. I will be making some opening remarks, and I invite all members of the community to attend and take part in this important event. So on that note, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move on to our land acknowledgement. The municipality of Port Hope exists on the lands of the Mishisagik Ashanabik, traditional territory covered by the Williams Treaties. We honour and recognise First Peoples as rights holders and stewards of the lands and waters on which we have the privilege to live, work, and play, including the Ganaraska Forest and River. We pay respect to elders past, present, and emerging. We commit to actions towards truth and reconciliation by recognising the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, strengthening ties with First Nations, Métis and Anewit Peoples, especially those who make their home in Port Hope, and learning from Indigenous ways of knowing and being. We do so by recognising the past and working towards a shared future. Moving on to pecuniary interests, is there a disclosure of any pecuniary interest around the table? I note that none were received in advance of the meeting. Okay, moving on to item number three, Correspondence. 3.1, Northumberland Intermunicipal Task Course on Housing and Homelessness Regarding Terms of Reference. And I'll ask the Deputy Mayor to speak to this point.
Thank you, Mary Lenna. And feel free to jump in as well, Councillor Todd. As the two delegates from Port Hope sitting on the task course, we did participate with the rest of the group, from representing the other municipalities in Northumberland, to co-draft the terms of reference for what we would be doing. And we had in our motion, our resolution passed at this council table agreeing to join, that those terms of reference would be circulated back to this council for review and for information.
Thank you very much for your work and your initiative in this regard. So the recommended action is to receive this for information. Can I get a mover and secondor to receive this item? Moved by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Todd, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to item number four, Items for Consideration. 4.1, Report CS0124-Re, 2024-2027 Advisory Committee Appointments, Environmental Advisory Committee and Civic Awards Advisory Committee. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything additional to add. The report is fairly straightforward. The candidates that are being presented to Committee of the Whole and consequently to council for appointment are in accordance with our appointment policy. The selection committees for each of these committees, the Environmental Advisory Committee as well as the Civic Awards Committee, they have completed their interviews, they're putting these names forward for your consideration tonight. I do want to note one thing, however, and that is that at the time of publishing the agenda with this report, we had still not received the names of the representatives from the HBIA as well as the Chamber of Commerce for the Civic Awards Committee. The terms of reference for that committee do require that we have representatives from those organisations to be on the committee. This afternoon, we received those two names. So I think that councillor Adam will be speaking to that a bit further, because I would recommend that we add those names to the list as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And obviously, we would like to thank everybody that put their names forward and volunteered for these opportunities. And I'm going to now turn it over to councillor Adam and to the Deputy Mayor to speak to the appointed members. Yes, go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. So first off, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers that did apply for the Civic Awards Committees and all of our committees. It's so wonderful to have so many of our, sorry, of our people in Port Hope, sorry, I'm losing my words here, that are wanting to volunteer for our committees. It's great. And we were very fortunate with the Civic Awards that we had some amazing applicants to the committee. It's unfortunate that we can only take so many people, because we do have to leave some out. First off, though, or second off, I'd like to make an amendment to the recommendation as listed, to add the names of the representatives of the HBIA and the Chamber of Commerce to the Civic Awards Committee. This is in accordance with the terms of reference for this committee. We have just received today the notice from the PRC that both these organisations have appointed the representatives to the Civic Awards Committee. I'd like to amend the motion to add Lou Pementor and Savan Kloosterhoff to the list of appointees for the Civic Awards Committee.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. We also had a lot of interest in the Environmental Advisory Committee this round, and many strong and qualified applicants representing different demographics in our community. I also would like to thank everyone who put their name forward, because that's, you know, I think, a sign of the level of interest that's out there, and I think a growing interest and appreciation for the importance of environmental sustainability in our community. I'm really thrilled with this group that was, that we've arrived on thanks to the hard work of the selection committee, which of course included Director Davidson and Lauren Wingon-Smith, who's the other staff representative and the manager of environmental remediation for the municipality. This group represents a really nice balance, not only of passion for the environment and experience in environmental activism and connections with the environmental community, but some real depth of expertise in key areas, including planning processes, sustainable infrastructure, and excitingly, a certified arborist with a background in tree canopy management. So I know that it's going to be a really strong committee, and I know they're just as eager as I am to jump right into the next steps in our climate action planning.
Thank you very much. So we have an amendment to the recommended action. I don't believe that I need to read out the entire action. I can just ask for a mover and secondor for that amended action?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so can I get a mover and secondor? Moved by, I'm going to start with councillor Mink, and seconded by councillor Adam, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. And thank you again for the work of everybody to populate these committees. Moving on to Report 4.2, FS0124-Re, Health and Safety Annual Review. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Sorry, the button needed a little bit harder pressing. Just to provide an update about how we came about with the information that's provided to the council. Annually, the Joint Health and Safety Committee will review their policy statement as well as the workplace violence, harassment, and discrimination policy, bring it forward to council for their review. This year, we had some minor changes that we did in both of those items. And in the workplace violence and harassment policy, we separated the policy from the procedure so that the procedures will be more operationally managed. So the policy that's come forward is a reduced-down version from what you would have seen last year before council, and it has the higher-level overview of policy and addresses, you know, the discrimination, harassment, and violence requirements that we would oversee.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
And we'll ask for some questions and comments. Maybe I'll just start, if you don't mind, Gina, just with a really basic question. And that is that I was just wondering how the decision was made around the content that goes into the procedural aspect of these policies versus the statement? Why the sort of, is there a reason why we wouldn't have definitions for some of these things in the actual policy statement as opposed to the part that addresses procedures?
I think that's more of an administrative decision as to where you put the definitions. They are all included in the procedure itself. And if it was felt that it would be better served to be at the policy level, then that's something that we could do, make that change. It just felt that operationally, when you're going to look up how to proceed next, you'd want to refer right there in that document to the definitions. So there's some merit to having it that way as well.
It was just a curiosity question, because sometimes I think in an overarching policy, it's not a bad idea to actually have some definitions so that before people decide whether or not they might want to proceed forward with some kind of action, that they have a fulsome understanding of how we're defining some of these elements of the policy. Any other questions or comments around the table around this? So the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and secondor for that? Moved by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Todd, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to 4.3, Report FS0224-Re, Heritage Business Improvement Area 2024 Budget. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report? The recommended action is listed on the agenda, so can I get a mover and secondor for this? Moved by councillor Adam and seconded by councillor Todd, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to Report 4.4, PD0324-Re, ZB102023, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application 5990, Maswood's Road. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Through the Mayor and council, I'd just remind you all that this report came forward, or this came forward, this matter as a public meeting on January 16th. At that time, there were no comments or concerns voiced by either council or the public, and we have not heard any other concerns since then.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
Hi. Admittedly, this question is not limited to this particular report or zoning amendment, but to, I think, a broader number of applications that are doing the same thing, that seem to be working their way through our planning process. And the question is about this, the decisions that we make to sever residences from agricultural land. And whether we are, when we agree to do this, it seems like there's no real going back, especially when we are putting limitations on any future residential use of that parcel of agricultural land. And it seems to me that each time we're reviewing an individual application, we're looking at that particular case, and everything adds up, and it's aligned with provincial policy and all of those things. And so we move forward, and it moves through the process, and it gets approved. My question is, what is the impact of each one of these piecemeal decisions? And if we look at the big picture, and we do this over and over and over again, what does that mean for the future of family farming in our community if residences and farmland are being separated and there's no opportunity then to go back? And do we end up with, like, commercial agriculture and no sense of the family farm left in Port Hope? And I know that that's a bigger question than, you know, for tonight and this particular report, but if you, forgive me for channeling our colleague councillor Mink, who asks this a lot, when is the opportunity to have these discussions about our vision, I said, I guess, for the community and the impacts that these individual decisions add up to? Because we may in fact be adding up to an impact that is not wanted and perhaps not sustainable for our community. And is that what we discuss when we talk about the official plan?
Through the chair to councillor, to the deputy mayor, yes, that is exactly when these conversations happen, is when we go through a process of official plan review. That is when you set your, that was when we set the policies or the policy framework that we move forward and that we operate within. So this policy framework was set in, ultimately set in 2017 at the end of that process. And so that is the regime we are living under, which is, which is, provides the vehicles for these types of activities to happen. So unless council directs us otherwise, and meaning to go back in and pull a part of the official plan out and amend it, or go through the review process, that, you know, that is the guiding document within which we work, and that is what has provided the framework that allows this type of activity to happen. The rules, as dictated to us by the province, really constrain our abilities around prime agricultural lands. And to be quite honest with you, you know, future official plans, certainly, as I look at what is coming from Northumberland County, we are only going to get more prime agricultural land in our community, not less. I can't imagine a world where we have less prime agricultural land after the next round of official plan review, and that will constrain the ability to do things on those properties even more, other than the framework within which we currently operate. So I guess the short answer to that question is, if you want to change the lens and within which we do this kind of work, we need to move forward more rapidly with reviewing our official plan. I would also just remind you that funding to do that work was on the table in the budget this year and was removed. So there is no financial ability to move forward on this this year unless we do something different.
Councillor Mink?
Thank you. So through the chair, first, I want to thank the deputy mayor for your comments and thoughtful reflection on this topic that continues to be something that is there, coming in repeatedly. Question, though, so when we make these decisions to put an exception on these properties, not allowing any future construction of a home or whatever, is that provincial policy or is that our own bylaw that puts that on there?
We pick up the provincial policy that's, it is, the current policy within our official plan is influenced by the provincial policy statement, and the provincial policies around prime agricultural lands. So it comes down from, you know, this is picked up in our official plan because the provincial direction is to consolidate agriculture.
Sorry, just a follow-up question to clarify. If in the future someone wanted to build a house on that property that we put the exception on, is there a process, even if it is costly and lengthy, to remove that exception so a house could be built? Or are we locking it in indefinitely forever, that a house could never be built on that agricultural land?
Through the chair to councillor Mink. So I guess the, my response to that would be, I don't like to speak in for ever. So the reality, and what I mean by that is, somebody could apply in the future to allow for residents on that property. Policy and procedure within our jurisdiction would mean that staff's position would inevitably be that we could not support that type of development or allowing for that development. Ultimately, if council decided the opposite way, that is within your purview.
So the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I ask for a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Adam and seconded by councillor Todd, all in favour. And that is, that has passed. Moving on to Report 4.5, PD0424-Re, ZBO32023, Zoning Bylaw Amendment Application, Part of Lot 12, Concession 3, Welcome. Does staff have any further, anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
In similar fashion as I introduced the last report, this also came to a public meeting on January 16th, and there were no comments or concerns voiced by council or staff at that time. And in the intervening time, as we prepared this report, we have heard no other concerns related to this matter.
Thank you. Is there anything further that anyone would like to add before we vote on the matter? Seeing none, the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I ask for a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Todd, seconded by councillor Les, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to 4.6, Report PRC0224-Re, 116 Royal Canadian Sea Cadet Corps, Skena Air Rifle Markmanship Competition Bylaw Exemption. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Thank you, Mayor. To just highlight, the request of this report is to seek council support for the event as outlined in the report, for our local air cadet corporation for an event that they are looking to host. It does require an exemption to the bylaw related to the discharge of firearms within that, the section of that bylaw. Staff have reviewed the event plan in detail and have completed site visits. I'd like to mention that, you know, the program through the cadets is managed by the Department on National Defence, and they have very stringent rules and requirements. So staff are pleased with how the event plan is coming forward.
Thank you very much, Director. Does anybody else have any questions? Councillor Mink?
Thank you. Through the chair, I don't have a question. I just want to, I just have a comment that I see this as a great opportunity of bringing something new to the community and bringing a youth presence. We've had a lot of discussion with the Sea Cadet Corps coming here and telling us the value of this organisation in our community. So I think it's great to have that, groups of people coming who may not have come otherwise and being introduced to our community.
Thank you for that. Is there anything else that anybody would like to add before I call for a vote? Okay, so the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by councillor Mink, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to Report 4.7, WE0224-Re, 2023 Municipality of Port Hope Drinking Water System Annual Summary Report. These next two reports are amazing and good news stories. So does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
The 2023 Port Hope Drinking Water System Annual and Summary Report summarises the performance of the system over the past year. We were successful in maintaining our drinking water quality management full scope accreditation certification and obtained 100% rating from the ministry. So a great year for the water department.
Thank you for that. Can't do better than 100%. And that's, that's an amazing track record for the municipality. So heartfelt congratulations to you and your entire team. Does anybody else have anything to add? Any comments or any questions around this? Okay, so that, these are one of those really easy ones that we can say. The recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Les, seconded by councillor Mink, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. Moving on to another good news report, 4.8, Report WE0324-Re, 2023 Annual Performance Reports for the Port Hope Wastewater Treatment Plant and Sewage Collection System. Does staff have anything further that they would like to add before we consider this report?
Similarly to water, the annual wastewater and annual and summary reports identify the performance of the system over the past year. The wastewater treatment plant performed very well on average, producing a final effluent with results lower than the objective specified in our environmental compliance approval. There were no bypass events or overflow events in 2023, and a number of improvements were made in the collection system.
Thank you for that, and congratulations again. Does anybody else want to add anything or ask any questions? Okay, so the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and secondor? Moved by councillor Todd and seconded by the deputy mayor, all in favour. Thank you, and that has passed unanimously. And moving on to the last report, 4.9, PS0424-Re, Traffic and Parking Bylaw Administration Amendment. Does staff have anything further they would like to add before we consider this report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In 2023, the Protective Services Department undertook a fee study as part of the service delivery process for the Municipal Law Enforcement Division of our department. Part of this review incorporated data collection and analysis of municipal fines associated with parking infractions. The prescribed municipal fees for services bylaw, which was recently updated, reflect the updated fines related to parking infractions, which now also includes early payment options. As such, an administrative update to the schedule of set fines is required within the body of the Traffic and Parking Bylaw to ensure conformity with the updated fines incorporated to the prescribed 2024 Fees for Services bylaw, which is adopted by council. Through the proposed amending bylaw, staff are also proposing administrative changes to ensure the traffic and parking bylaw is reflective of the current status of identified parking needs in specific areas of our municipality, including but not limited to current payment methods available for parking, prohibited parking in school zones, and the updated prohibited parking locations in other select areas of the municipality. A more fulsome, comprehensive review and updating of the entire traffic and parking bylaw is, in its entirety, will be in the 2025 Work Plan for the Roads Division in consultation with the municipal law enforcement staff. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for the highlights. Any questions or comments from the table? Okay, seeing none, the recommended action is listed on the agenda. Can I get a mover and a secondor? Moved by councillor Adams, seconded by the deputy mayor, all in favour. And that has passed unanimously. There are currently no notices of motion on the agenda tonight. Moving on to item six, Updates and New Business. So I have a few updates that I would like to share. I've already mentioned that the Pan-African Flag-Raising Ceremony in celebration of Black History Month is happening February 1st at 11:00 AM at Town Hall. Please note that this ceremony is taking place outdoors, so please dress appropriately. And of course, we welcome all members of the community to attend. Last Friday, we shared the province's news that Chris Collins has been appointed a Justice of the Peace, and per rules within the Justices of the Peace Act, he is offered to resign as councillor for the municipality of Port Hope. On behalf of council, I of course offer heartfelt congratulations to Justice of the Peace, Collins, and thank him for his dedicated service to the municipality and in particular to War II over the last year. He will be missed at the table. With respect to the next steps for this council, in accordance with the municipal act, when a member resigns, council is required to declare the seat vacant at its next meeting. Council has 60 days after declaring a seat vacant to either appoint an individual to fill the vacancy or pass a bylaw declaring a by-election. This council will declare the seat vacant at our next regular meeting on February 13th, and staff will bring forward a report for council to consider an appointment or a by-election. Throughout the process, we will continue to provide regular communication updates in terms of the process to keep the community fully informed. Moving on, just one final update. I did want to share that at our last Northumberland County Council meeting, the council authorised council staff to investigate the feasibility to pilot a community partnership of up to one year to reopen the Port Hope Walk-in Medical Clinic and to execute and to execute applicable agreements, providing sufficient external financing has been secured with community partners to set up and operate the clinic for the first year. This is an important development. As you know, we, we have been giving updates, councillor Les and myself have been giving updates at this table for the last number of months. And we've made a lot of progress, but we got really hung up on the last step, which was who is going to take responsibility for signing the lease of the clinic. So we're very pleased that the county has been open to becoming the leaseholder and is actively now involved in executing these final steps. And in, in reflection of this very important development, I will be bringing a motion forward to our next council meeting to formally endorse the Port Hope Clinic for this community. And I don't know councillor Les, if you wanted to add anything to this.
Only that, we've had incredible input throughout the community for the need for the walk-in clinic. And I've spoken with a number of medical practitioners, including the chief of staff of the hospital, who was just beside himself with joy with the fact that we could bring in something like this to Port Hope because of the shortage of doctors and healthcare that we're experiencing now and will in the future. And our friends at Port Hope, Port Hope and District Healthcare Foundation, Rotary Port Hope, Municipality of Coburg, some of the pharmacists have really jumped in and to support this initiative monetarily. And as I say, it's a one-year project to see how it's going to sustain itself. So we're, we hopefully are over the hump. We had some issues with CRA and their directive, but I think we're beyond that now.
Thank you for that. And just one other update is, I had a meeting with the president of Loyalist College this morning, and he's also expressed an interest in providing a financial contribution towards the walk-in clinic to be determined. And I will put in a plug for the Rotary Club of Port Hope, which is putting together a really exciting fundraiser for the clinic on March 2nd. Sponsorship packages are available for those that would like to participate. They're putting together, I think, a really amazing program. And I may actually be asking a number of our council members to consider some of their talents and services for the silent auction. So give some thought. I know that they're really focusing on providing items for the auction that are about experiences. And I know that, you know us all as council members, but every person at this table has many talents outside of being on councils. So I know that the Rotary may be approaching you to participate. And I think it's a nice way to engage council on this very important community initiative. Any other updates from the table? Yes, deputy mayor.
Thank you. So last week, when I was filling in for Marilena on your regular spot on your TV, I was asked about the new procedural bylaw and we were chatting about that. And I was really excited to be talking about the addition of deputations to our council meeting agendas. But then I was asked for details about how people go about doing a deputation and I was at a loss. I wasn't able to provide those details and I felt a bit sheepish about that. And I know this is one of the pieces of the new procedural bylaw that's getting a lot of attention in the community. So if you don't mind, I just wanted to correct that and share the information. If you go to the port, ourporthope.ca website and type in deputation, you'll be taken to a form online that you can fill out with your name and let us know which agenda item it is that you want to be speaking to so that it can be added to the agenda. And I think the residents are asked to do that by noon the day before our council meetings so that staff have time to add that to the agenda. And just to say that in two weeks' time, on February 13th, I really hope that we're going to see our first deputations and see this new opportunity to have your voice heard by council before our deliberations in action.
Any other updates from around the table? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on now to question periods. Now time for question period. Remember, question period is for questions only and is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of council. Please keep your questions direct. So we're going to start with just saying that, anybody around the council table have any questions? Okay, seeing none. I don't see any media in our midst. Then we'll move on now to questions from the public. And if you do come up to the microphone, please press the button, identify your name and your address, and we will hear your questions.
Good evening, council. Name's Dan James from 3191 County Road 10, and welcome. I just have one question, just more to understand the processes of the decision, whether it'll be an appointment or a by-election. Do the citizens have any voice? Citizens not only of Ward 1, Ward 2, but the whole municipality. Is there any way that we can speak to councillors? Or is there any considerations made from the public in this decision? Or is this decision solely made by staff and council only?
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that very excellent question. So according to the municipal act, the decision lays with council. It doesn't even lay with staff, it lays with council. And the first step of the process is to declare the seat vacant. So as the mayor was saying, that the next meeting, February 13th, council will formally declare the seat vacant. That starts the clock. And that report that's going to come to council will provide quite an overview of the obligations that council has, as well as some of the timelines related to the appointment or the by-election if one is called by this council. In terms of how the public can provide feedback, absolutely, there are several different ways where you can provide feedback. You can go to the Connect with Council page and you can, you know, contact your council members. You can write to clerk@porthope.ca, express your opinions. And we're happy to circulate that to council through the Council Information Index. You can come to the February 20th meeting because that is what we're aiming to present the, you know, present all of the options to council for their consideration. It'll be a committee of the whole meeting, there'll be a question period. You can express, you know, ask any questions or seek any clarification then. And then, of course, at the council meeting, following that, where the actual decision will be made, you will have the opportunity to make a deputation, right? So just as the, as the deputy mayor was describing, that would be another opportunity for you to provide your feedback. But in terms of who makes that decision, the municipal act clearly states that it is council's decision and they can make that decision whether they decide to appoint. And the municipal act is actually quite, it doesn't provide a lot of detail as to how they do that appointment. So, so you know, that would be something that council will be discussing and deliberating as part of this whole process. And then the second, of course, is the by-election. And then at that point, the municipal election act kicks in.
If I may have one follow-up question to that. I read in some bylaws that if it were to be a by-election, again, a clarification question, if it were to be a by-election question, a decision, that a member of either Ward 1 or Ward 2 could go for a vote in that decision. Is that the same in appointment? If the council decides that it is an appointed position, is there bylaw or how does the bylaw work? Does the appointed member have to be a Ward 2 resident? Or could it be the same way as the bylaw for the by-election?
Thank you for that excellent question, and you are correct. If there is a by-election that is called, in accordance with our transition board order, either a member of Ward, an eligible voter in Ward 1 or Ward 2 could stand for the by-election in Ward 2. In terms of appointment, it is the same. The council has the opportunity and they will be deliberating whom they want to appoint. And it would have to be somebody who is eligible for appointment in accordance with the municipal act.
Thank you for those questions. Does anyone else in the audience have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, thank you very much all for attending this meeting. This concludes our business to be covered on today's agenda. And I am in a position to adjourn the committee of the whole at 6:45 p.m.
It's 7:10.
I am, I am so sorry. I think my, my, my absolute, my phone's got stuck. I was going to say, that was really record speed. But no, absolutely, 7:10 p.m., my mistake. Thank you.